Georgetown City Council meeting, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three is now called to order. HK, you ladies in person, please.
Well, I come to you this beautiful evening and we just thank you for the many blessings of letting us live in our town and serve people here. Thank you for the energy that we feel, the optimism amongst our people. We thank you for these men and women who are committed to making this a better place to live and we thank you with your blessings that we move forward for our generations to come. Forgive us of our sins in Jesus's name, amen.
Our pleasure, ladies, to define the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting, I need a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Motion made.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, we're gonna skip down to just the main, we don't have a lot of stuff to go over tonight unless somebody has something that I'm not aware of, but just...
I don't know how quick we're going. We've been approached by, uh, these restaurants in town have to park up at the third apartment, you know?
Uh, if we could grab a section there where they park, uh, saving rooms down in town for customers and it's, it's getting pretty, pretty crowded.
So if we could grab a little that area right there, I think that would be good, especially if bad weather comes on.
That's why I talked to somebody about that with before, they thought it would be a good idea to do it before winter because it's probably gonna get pretty yucky back there with cars parked in the grass.
Probably take off a little dirt on the top, but there ain't much top, there ain't no top soil up there, but back when the city bought that off of Satan or Mallard's old houses there, some, they got some back in there, white dog tops, all that, they left it red clean.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think that, you know, the, they're gonna have somewhere to park, but there's just not anywhere else, I mean, we're, when I come in, there's all the way down the side of the streets, all the way thousands of people.
First time in years, getting back like that.
Yeah.
Good doing it.
It's a good thing.
Good.
And then I think when Giovanni's get up and, you know, let's do that a little more, so...
Have we got a date on them?
No, they were like, I think just a couple of weeks away from the last I talked to Michael Scott, they were just waiting on Giovanni's final approvals. I guess with them being a franchise, they have to approve too.
I heard they had some problems about him, there was something about a handrail around the sidewalk or...
I don't know.
He's gonna be on his sidewalk, so this city, so I don't know.
I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, or a couple nights ago, and he said that they were, they had two or three things left to do and they thought that buying on special was pretty much all they were waiting on. They had, so they had everything moved in there. They had just a, just a little bit more to do there. I don't think.
So any thoughts on the getting the gravel down? Anybody want us to move forward on that, to turn this thing around?
I'll bet Russian, that's what we need. Get gravel, very good for it, it's gotta be done.
It's a way, somebody enough truck to go up there.
Okay, motion for a minute, second.
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll turn the picture to her. Uh, the only thing, I just kinda, a couple things, you know, Christmas on the square is coming up, first Friday of December. I think they're gonna switch things around a little bit this year. I talked to Marissa Ramsey and they're planning right now. Normally they have Santa Claus over here at that park and the line is astronomical as far as you can go and, and then it's time for the tree to be lit up and have the kids and parents are still on, over there waiting to see Santa. So their plans, from what she's telling me, is to move Santa up on the, in front of the Judicial Center, at the top of the steps, and then everybody will be over in that area when the tree's lit, you're gonna, everybody's gonna be there. Now, I don't know about, with the kids, it's gonna sing, are they still gonna be on the steps? Do you know, maybe? I don't know.
I think, yes, I think they're still gonna be there. Um, those kids that danced last night, they're gonna be in that park, new stage, and they're gonna do some more, the way I think of what she said, they're gonna do a few more, I guess, little dances this time. Um, the whole aerial thing, they're gonna have them in the quadrant, like the, that quadrant, you know, real job quadrant. Um, and, but the kids dancing, they don't, they don't be as much room this time, there'll be more room to stand over there in front of like the tree and stuff because they don't, they're, we're gonna barricade closer to the stairs this time instead of having all that area blocked off because all those kids dance when we have, uh, that park.
Are they gonna bring the kids up and off the, to have a line up and come up to see Santa and do their picture and cut that off? Have they got that?
I don't know, they're going up the, up and out the same ramp, but I know they're, they're lining up down the ramp where it's, it's this way and then this way, then they're gonna line them back down toward the parking lot.
Okay.
And then I don't know if they're gonna come back, because the minutes, I don't know if they can go up and down the same one, but they may have a different idea. They may be pulling right off the front of the stage and coming down the side there, I mean, however they wanna do it, I guess.
Well, I've noticed in the past, there is always a lot of people still in line up there when it's time for the tree to be lit, so if they can pull that off, that's probably a good idea, I think. So, um, that, that's coming up, I don't know, I'm sure everybody has Facebook, but if you notice, a lot of the businesses are getting into Christmas on the square. They're gonna be a part of it, they're gonna set up, they're gonna need out things. You know, a lot of the businesses are already making plans and sharing everything, so I think we're getting a lot more people involved. Wonder something about, uh, Tinseltown, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Um, I really, I don't know that much about it. Whitney and, and actually Marissa said something about it today. They're wanting to get businesses, they're wanting to grow, you know, in wooden years, but have, um, businesses decorate trees and have them in the town. Um, they're looking, they're looking this year, maybe going down the burning wall or the fire wall, like going down that wall this, this year. Maybe, maybe eventually they get enough to fill the, the square, like having, having enough electric on the, the actual roundabout up there and set them all there. And have different businesses decorate each one and, um, I think they're like six to eight feet or something like that, and just have them, have different trees decorated.
Didn't Chloe do that every one time? I think she did, I think so.
Y'all saw the arch on the square tonight, it's all lit up. Have anybody seen that yet?
The walk.
The arch, the Christmas lights, the arch on the square. Nobody seen that?
I drove right, I drove right through town.
You need to look at it, it was really cool.
Yeah, I was looking at all the lights on the stage over there, bro, I thought that looked nice.
Notice on that square, and we're, we're hoping, we've got a couple, couple things we're hoping to put over rather than the back park area. Don't get in comments, have a message on the comments. Square a little bit, just that town being, you know, people and it's decorated.
What about Grace Hall decorated?
That's why we've been talking about that too. Um, that's coming up, decorating for the, uh, last year all we did, I think, maybe I talked a few minutes ago, I think last year we did three places for residential, uh, for second, third, and we only, we're gonna do one place for business because there really wasn't hardly any businesses inside the city limits. But we were talking, we felt like it's probably time to extend that to three places for businesses also because I think we got enough people now that we may get more interest in, you know, people decorating, to decorate their business up. So we looked at, maybe is it the eleventh? The eleventh will be their last day to sign up and the judge, and it'll be the eighteenth. That way we figure by the eighteenth, if anybody's gonna decorate, it's gonna have it done. But it gives them up to the eleventh, the week before the judge should be signed up, so...
That would take its hours.
Just call city hall.
Just call city hall.
Yeah, that's what we did last year. Mm-hmm. Yeah, just call city hall and we'll, we'll write it down, we'll send their name, phone number, and address.
So we're, uh, Nautica and downtown Variety both have got all kinds of Christmas stuff for sale in there. Anybody's looking for a bargain on Christmas decorations, they've got it.
Yeah, yeah, there's, uh, and they've been, you know, involved, they share the stuff that the city's got going on and stuff too, so, yeah. And we can do that out of all those businesses.
I just think, yeah.
So if everybody's okay with those dates, that's what we'll put on the, the decorating contest. Did that get this year? Before I forget, I, because I wanna let this slip by, but, uh, we all know about Jeff Kearns' mother and Neil's sister.
Did you know about Leo's father-in-law?
And he passed away, and, uh, so we just wanna express sympathy to, to all of them in their family. And if we can help with anything, we'll leave it as that. And Jeff, I'm sure, you know, tired of staying in contact with him, and I think, I think they're doing pretty good. His dad's pretty, pretty sick, but he's, Jeff's trying to stay with him a lot, so... Anyway, just one sad thing that we have to talk about. And I don't know who all knows anything much about this, but I just thought it would all go, I thought they were talking about this. Did anybody hear anything about the people that are wanting to fund the movie in James County, Russell Springs, without counting?
Heard it on news, but just a little bit back, but...
They've actually come to the bank a couple times, I've met with them, I think they've had a pair of costume, they've had people in Russell Springs, they've met with to the Star Theater, had people that is, uh, has tried out for the cast. What was the name of the Game Changer, the movie that we showed here on the square one time, I believe it was, and showing at the Russell Springs, it's the same group, they're out of Atlanta.
They do a pretty good job of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't they have Russ, they have Russ Kinkas, somebody that's...
I, I think so. I think they've, they've started with, but, um, they did do Game Changer and I, and I talked to them a little bit about the insurance purposes and stuff like that, you know, making sure that they had insurance.
I think they did, you talked about some auditions or something.
They did, I think that people...
Around the news.
Wish that wasn't there.
They went to the Star Theater, I think, and then they had a dish, the, the tryouts up at Russell Springs Baptist Church. I forgot, I think there's gonna be like fifty people that they're gonna have sitting, but here's the big thing. They've sent me a message last week, area in Atlanta, this, but two scenes in James County that are what they're wanting to do. One to the cemetery, which is only gonna be just a short period, maybe thirty minutes, I think, I don't know what part it is. The way, it's kind of a, this whole thing is kind of a Christian-backed, uh, fight against opioids and all, all this stuff going on. Uh, there's gonna be lots of different scenes. Another going down to one of the horse stables, there's gonna be a scene there.
Yeah.
Diamond Ridge, maybe? Is it Diamond Ridge? They went to a couple different ones.
I know it's near.
The West, the West.
Yeah.
I don't know who they decided on or where that's gonna be for sure, I don't know all the details. The main ones I've talked to about is what they're wanting to do in James County. Wanted to do a scene at the cemetery that will only hold, well, let's say an hour, it's gonna be very short.
They'll need to get permission from the cemetery board.
Is that what happens?
I'm on board with that.
Okay. But the other one's kinda funny because when he said, "There's gonna be a car crash scene," and, uh, he said, "We've pulled in, it needs to be like a, a four-way or a three-way area," and he said, "What we've mapped, and we feel, because this place is O and walnut." I thought that's wrong, Leo! You're kidding me? No, right there is where they're wanting to actually do the crash.
Yes.
And somehow, I guess...
That's right in the middle of the scene.
I think the way I understand it, maybe some teenage girls will be in the vehicle and it's got timed, the whole story, but we're probably looking five to six hours.
Where's O's, where, the walts inside, mom's house, where's, where's O's?
Right on the other way.
Oh, really?
Right on the other side of the session.
Okay.
Is where they're wanting to do that. And I guess my only thoughts to him was, you know, well, we just have to see, and he says, "Would there be any cost?" I said, "Well, if you need any of our people, you know, if you, if there's any of our people, you may have to, that might be your cost, but as far as the city charging you a cost to do this, no, I can't imagine it'd be anything like that." But if you need, like, some of our police to be there or whatever, you know, that may come into part of, I don't know, that's just something that could be, but, um, I said, "I'll find out and make sure that everybody's on board and see what we have to do." I mean, oh, that's not a main street there, but it would have to be blocked off if you steal people from your ground anyway.
You could tell Rock, Mitchell, and Tony, and Terry, and me, I'll live right there.
Oh, that way?
And you too, yeah, and, uh, Dwight and, and...
Be the first on the scene.
We could come hobbling up, up to help them out or something, you know, couldn't run.
Maybe the store.
Could be.
I, I think they wanted it in an area where there is houses because I think part of it's gonna be that, I don't know who they got with, I don't even think I'd even get that stuff, that somebody walking out of their house.
I turned in front of my house, it'd be a real place, 'cause you came and see.
Kids in the way.
There's been plenty there.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's, and I know that they've met with a lot of different people, but that's, I mean, to me, that, that's the two places that they are just wanting to get permission, that it's okay for them to do that. And, um, I think that it's, uh, it's gonna be a lot, lot done in Russell County. It's all in Russell County, but there's gonna be a lot of different places involved, but that's the two, unless something changes.
When is this all gonna take off?
Uh, first of December, I believe. I mean, I don't know what dates, but I'm just gonna see if I can find that email from him, I can find it. I don't know, I wanna say even, but... I, I'll look that up, 'cause I've got it somewhere, I'll just have to find it and let y'all know what the dates are. I haven't seen it right now, I don't know if I did, I just got two emails on here that are... But I'll find out, but I know personally we're looking at, during all the filming, they're helping with, and then it's, it got pushed back, so they're looking at this anyway. So, yeah, I said, you know, they, they take care of everything. They'll do all the cleanup, anything that's done, they'll take care of everything. I don't know how big their crew could bring, but I think it's pretty big. And they'll, they'll try to get all the, all the scenes done by days and then, you know, be pretty cool, I guess, if we could chill. And I know Game Changer was pretty big that they did.
I think we could see it when we look at it.
Yeah.
We should have it on square, we'll know.
Yeah, but I don't think, I think that's gone.
So if y'all are okay when I talk to you, I mean, I just, as long as we...
Oh, I'm sober, it's I'm sober, I'm on, on seven.
They're gonna be okay when we be out there, and I think that the only, the only scene that's gonna be there is there where the little, the little, where they've got the little...
And they were, yeah.
Yeah, there, I think that's where the filming's gonna be there.
Okay, great.
And I was just thinking about the road there, the four-way there in our house. If you really, if you walk off the end of the road down there and walk off right there where they're doing, everybody still has access to get around, everybody going around the back.
If they need legal services, I can help, I can play.
But I, I mean, it sounds pretty cool, I think, you know?
It does.
Did you see Dave's Russell County and James County getting the video? I think that the crash is one of the biggest scenes, so it's, you know...
Well, it'd be good to have a lawyer right there.
Oh, yeah.
You might want Sue.
Chase Randall.
Okay, so that's, that's...
The hammer.
We do need to go into executive session.
Can I ask one thing before we go?
Oh, yes.
Where are we at on our golf cart orientation?
We're not at all, yet.
I guess I need some direction on what we're doing.
I think we just more, we need to, I wanna simplify and...
Simplify it, maybe it's paravents getting by wherever else.
Make it, uh...
Do we totally resent what we had?
We did.
Yes.
It was seven pages, the eight rules that looked like, I don't know, it was impossible.
Well, I'm not sure, Tyler, what, we met with somebody, you know, and I'm not sure exactly what we have to put in it to make it lawful, so I've got to revisit that, by the way.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, honestly, the, the list of rules, that came straight from the state, so I don't know how simplified they can be as far as, um, the seat belts and the reflectors and headlights. I don't know how much more simplified they can be because we didn't make, we didn't make it up. They base, they gave it to us when me and Debbie went to that class up there, they gave us the, basically, the printout. It was basically, well, we got certified just like, uh, we're not anymore, so it's a good thing we don't have a law department, but we got certified just like the sheriff's department does to check, rebuild vehicles. So I, there was really, we went up there all day for that class for a section that was about thirty seconds long, and there was really no direction on that. They just give us, okay, it needs this, it needs this on it.
I thought talking to that guy in Frankfurt at that time was pretty unhelpful, really. They just kinda push you out there, you know, they don't...
When I looked at Frankfurt's ordinance, Frankfurt has an actual ordinance going at theirself.
For the city?
Yeah.
Well, let's get it.
Well, it's online, all you gotta do is Google it and it'll come right up.
What would you Google? Golf card ordinance?
Frankfurt golf card ordinance.
I, we can get, we can probably get some.
And it's not very long, that's what comes down.
That's what, yeah.
The ordinance, the ordinance, that's the only thing, like, I'm not, I'm not really sure exactly how long the ordinance would even have to be, but what makes it lawful to be on a state street? Because we're not only, they're not lawful at the level on a state highway.
That's true.
So, so one twenty-seven, ninety-two, you know?
Sixty-five, fifty.
Yeah, none of this, none of the, it's not lawful at all to be on any of those.
This guy reiterated that it was unlawful to be on US one twenty-seven or ninety-two or any of those roads. We can put them on city streets and then only cross at a ninety-degree angle across the main highway. So really, we got kinda scattered out a little bit, by the way, talking to this guy about what we could really pass. You know, we wanna run all the way to the marina up here, and he just laughed, "No, we can't."
Yeah, it's, they're illegal on a city street, any, any of it, or not a city street, the federal law can say that way.
Should be able to go on James County boat, I don't know, it's too much territory.
They actually list the streets.
Yeah, that's the one, because I think there'd be some allowance about it.
Yeah, right, right, you're right.
Which they couldn't do on any of the streets here.
And that's where they, that lady, where they cross, right there or something.
They could have do it anyway, even if they didn't think, well, you know.
The city starts with twelve acres.
We're in Russell Springs, all the, all five, that's what they're...
See, what they got, if I may, Tyler, what, what Wayne has here, they've got the city, they've got the city streets where you can put them, Shelby Street, Jefferson, all of them are all there. And then it's got the places here where it's restricted, where you cross, like you can cross one twenty-seven, maybe going from Bauer over the, over to Jess, uh, Jefferson.
Okay, is it legal? And I'm not, you know, like me, if you, if you cross that road and you cross one twenty-seven and the state police comes in here, we have no jurisdiction on that whatsoever, that, that federal law. Even if it is a city ordinance, they, they pull you over crossing that road, we, we wouldn't have no control over it. The state will be above, the state law would be above city.
It would be, it would be, but does the statute let you cross the road directly at a ninety-degree angle to go from one city street to the other, just like, just like these four-wheel?
Be double-slept, that, that.
It's just like, yeah, it's just like these... Like, 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 yeah.
I mean, I guess if you're taking your off our carbon, then I guess that would be, but I don't, I don't...
I always want you, is that Frankfurt Gov. or something like that?
Oh, yeah, Frankfurt, not KY, not Gov.
And I think before too, there was a lot...
Ormit's number one...
That was their problem with the last one. We had...
Dot two oh two one.
You know, we went from...
Or what?
Gaines Avenue.
One two dot two oh one two, or two oh two one, so it's a two thousand twenty-one.
Down the hill to...
They probably sent us that.
Skaggs or what, you know, we...
It has to be dollars still.
It's online.
And then down to the, down to the school, so...
It's all, that's good.
Wilson.
Ever, ever rid of that was...
Good movie.
They say, you know...
I know, a lot of that fun stuff.
Let's see if I've got you where I can say.
But before, you ordered stickers, you had to have a sticker, and then you need to pack it, all, we just need to decide, is that stuff, or are we gonna, you know?
Yeah, and if...
Because if it is, it's gotta be done.
That's another thing, like, do they, do they need to be insured? Do they need, what, what exact, you all tell me what needs to be...
Thank you.
What needs to be on them? Like, you know what I'm saying, that, as far as, if there's no regulations to the state, what has to be on them, then you all decide, if it's headlights, taillights, horn, you all decide.
Well, remember, I read that one, that's the way that is.
Frankfurt has it?
All they, yeah, and all they require is like headlights, taillights, you don't even, it doesn't even call for turn signals, a horn, or anything like that.
And, and no, like, no, is there insurance on them?
Nope.
So what happens if they, if they get run over and hit a car?
Side, so I can't take that shit.
You know, say there's a bicycle, someone riding a bicycle, or if you get on a bicycle.
If you get run over out walking on the sidewalk.
And a horn, I think.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think it could be, yeah, I think the main thing is where you're going, if you can get the streets down, that's where you can light it and make sure you cross where you're supposed to, then...
Who has a list of all the streets here? Do we have a list of the streets?
Yes.
Can we get that, maybe, and just...
Make sure you add a street, walnut up there.
Certainly Shell, certainly Shell Street.
Oh, and that, that part I bought, I mean, after that.
I wonder how many people remember how to get a hand signal.
They're not legal anymore.
Huh? Really?
I asked the state clerk, he said, "Hand signal for not lawful."
Wow.
I said, "Well, if your, if your taillights out, I mean, hand signals aren't working at all."
What if you're an antique vehicle?
You're just supposed to get a little blankie out of it.
I don't know.
Old place like that.
I had a guy come in the store. This goes slow, you're a cousin, you know? I had a guy come in the store with like a oh-eight or oh-nine.
All of me there, like, this Frankfurt.
But his taillights are a complete assembly and they're LED, and you can't replace the LED bulb, you have to replace the entire assembly. You know, I'll tell you who told me, I was nine hundred and something dollars.
Gary Williams.
Nine hundred and something dollars.
He's our huge man, hand signal.
Gary Williams. Gary Williams, sitting there.
How many Riverdale singles, that means turning...
Here and then here.
But the ones right down there.
Stop.
Yeah, you're right, alright.
Well, this guy, this guy, nine hundred and something dollars in the place that it has.
I'm starting to look it up.
He's right by someone, he's like...
So HK, you'll check on that.
I soon will.
On our ordinance, and just try to get that.
My clock is running late.
Well, let's try to get that back. Get back.
Thanks a lot.
Get, um...
I just call it run once you run. I'll post, I'll, and I need to read the name of the streets and we'll just go that way.
That's good.
Yeah, and more importantly, I guess you all need to get together and give a view on exactly what needs to be on these golf carts, because if we have to inspect them up here, is that something that, if, exactly what, what we're looking for?
What do you require?
Yes, what, what, what as a city, we're looking for is to say, "Okay, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll certify this golf cart and, and send them out there as long as I, as long as I go by, whatever y'all put on there, but we're running a break here, but you're bad."
Well, before that, that went to your wife, universal.
There was something, thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was crazy.
Yeah.
This stuff was awesome. I had two fasts. The entire time that we done them, I, I passed two, and the first year, I just sat one.
They're gonna say one, okay.
Out of, uh, I bought a roll of stitters off, uh, Denny money over here, they were the coolest things ever, and I gave up one.
My favorite one, I got a DVD disc, one that goes back.
Well, I put parrots in those and seat belts on mine, cause I thought we had to have them, so.
Yeah, I didn't seat belts and all that.
That's why, yeah.
I've got some in my drawer, I'll pop the toolbox.
Well, I don't like break. The horn, horn parrot ones, do they buy your kids for them by yours?
No, I don't want to put anything else on my stick.
No, but I'm saying, I think I think it's like kids, you know.
The way I'm sitting through this, all you're gonna have to slow make, slow move the vehicles out of them.
Slowly.
I would like to.
The triangle, dude.
Well, that gets it.
I come in a tractor.
And you do have to have insurance, as the nurse says.
Insurance on your golf cart?
Yeah. As per K R S three oh four thirty-nine oh eight.
Tony, you got one?
And you have to be a.
Me and Michael's on it. And you and Mitchell's on it.
Tony, you wanna buy one?
Not really.
I mean, it's not. Oh, the insurance would be the main thing. I don't know about.
Take out your six and buy me a hardy.
There you go. Voila.
You wanna buy one?
I like that.
I'll do it for ten hardy. Yeah.
I liked my golf cart. I mean, it's the same people encourage and tearing, uh, people putting Christmas trees up on the square. Taryn, I got a.
Tinsel town?
Tinsel town. Is that part of the city or is that just?
That's with, uh, with the, with the, with the Randy, you know, the Christmas on the square.
Yeah, we're.
Wanted to be, become part of that.
I don't know. I'm going to start us to do that somewhere else.
Or the bank, the, you know, we don't have enough to do that.
Wonder what K R S.
On the wall or the tar. But then if we start getting enough, they should go.
Yeah, they're wanting to go with the whole law.
I'm like the motion, we enter, uh, executive session.
Got a motion to go into the executive session, K R S six one dot eight one O. So, so we got a second.
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 So we need to go. All favor. Any opposed?